The board, its members and employees are immune from liability and any injuries arising from transportation to and from release time instruction. Further, no board funds will be expended for and no district personnel shall be involved in the provision of religious instruction. They shall collaborate with the sponsoring entity to identify time for religious instruction offered during the school day prior to releasing it. Students shall not be excused from curriculum courses to attend release time. So the board deems all graded courses to be core curriculum, including but not limited to courses that have state approved learning standards and staff may not promote or discourage it. But some things that could make it tougher, for instance, this one is, oh gosh, which what school is this? I can't tell, the logo is kind of small, but they have to, the parents have to sign consent each semester. This one only makes you do it once. So that extra semester is just a little extra step that you have to do in order, you know what I mean? That's just an extra barrier. And they had, it's the responsibility of the private entity or is, oh, this one, this one puts in, they want them to do a background check. This one specifically states to do a background check like the district employees would get. Salem's doesn't have that. This one up in Toledo was, I thought, pretty strong because it says that the students are going to be, they can be, they need to know at the beginning of the year, they have like 14 days to tell us what three days you need for your religion. It doesn't really matter if it's apostlearian or what it is. They're not going to go and check, is what they're pretty much saying, if it's what you believe and you're going to go do that, what three days do you need? And that kind of eliminates LifeWise breaking down three days into like 30 days of an hour, you know, for multiple weeks. So I think Salem has room to make theirs a little bit stronger than what they currently have.
They do, but I also think they put something really brilliant in their policy to really restrict it, and that was not re, not allowing them to be released from any class that has a state standard, which is every education class.
Has state.
Because specials classes are still hold to, held the state standards, right? My wife is a music teacher, has pages and pages and pages of academic standards that she has to meet, right? So I think that, I thought that was in there and I wanted to hear it out loud because that's brilliant, by the way.
That's the one thing they added. The rest is just the copy and paste policy, the bare minimum. I think Toledo's is one of the best examples that we've seen. Again, this is something that our organization tracks. We actually put together a model policy for school boards to consider to like address some of these issues proactively, right? Because Ohio is mandated, the schools have to have this policy. Schools still have authority to dictate what that policy says though, and they can't, they can't put guidelines or restrictions in.
We have two more questions. So this is your last one, Zach. How are evangelistic lessons kept from crossing into proselyzing within the public school environment?
They're absolutely not, and that's really the key here. This is the intention, right? We see them sending invitations, golden ticket invitations with the kids back to the classroom saying invite your friends. We see them saying, if you get so many of your friends to sign up, we'll have a party where you can pie your teacher in the face. This is the goal. They want these kids to go in and pressure the other students because that is constitutionally protected free speech. The LifeWise teachers and volunteers cannot go into the school and evangelicalize and pressure these students, but the other students can. I think it's also really important to note here, even though the students can do that, a district can restrict that to non-instructional time. Like they shouldn't be handing out these invitations during science class. The district does have the authority or has upheld it again and again to restrict this type of divisive talk to non-instructional time like lunch and recess. So, you know, again, it's something the district can take control of if they want to. The problem that we see is a lot of districts are fully on board with this, right? I'm sure many of you know, we've had these models for liberty candidates, people, types like that, targeting these school boards for a very long time. So it's really important to be involved and to run for board.
And wouldn't it be like me if I didn't end in some sort of history lesson? But it's legal in Ohio law, they say, but legal doesn't always mean wise. The law was written with LifeWise's input. We still need to ask if it's in the best interest of every public school student. Remember, the 1850 Fugitive Slave Law also required our local here, underground railroad heroes to break the federal law, which they were not adhering to that law, they were breaking the law. So what, what are abolitionist heroes do with a law that doesn't seem to be right for community? And that's what I'm going to say about that. These are my local heroes I'm putting up here. But now it's your turn. So if you have any questions or comments, let's try to keep it respectful. And John will keep track of time, so you don't go too much. But Bruce, you have a question?
Yeah, question. Does LifeWise have any competition? I mean, I've got a couple of ideas and, you know, like Streetwise Academy, you know, I can teach them how to, you know, important life lessons like what if they can't pay their bookie back on time or, you know, things like that.
I think if you could wrap that up to officially.
Oh, you can make more money on the street than you get for your allowance.
An official religious belief, then you could absolutely do that. So the reality is, is the law does allow for, the law allows for every religious expression to do this.
Yeah.
The answer to your question, does LifeWise have competition? Not really, not a ton, because let's, let's be clear, again, a community like Salem was not clamoring for this. They weren't asking for this. It was brought to them and it was then denied and, and so, and that happens more times than you can imagine. Like a lot of districts are on board, but they have been told no a lot. If they weren't, they wouldn't be lobbying to make it mandatory. So, no, there isn't a lot, and that is why we're talking LifeWise specific more than the general RTI, art, yeah, you know what I mean? So, yes.
Well, I'm just saying if, if another, you know, like a Muslim group or something came in and offers the same thing, you know, they, they might have worked.
There's actually, the Satanic Temple did roll out a program, but like.
Is that in Marysville? Yeah, there you go.
But again, like there are the same problems with that from a non-religious doctrine point of view, right? That, that was our concern with it. They are still just not running the same type of background checks. They actually had no curriculum whatsoever. They, they were completely leaving it up to the local person running it to decide what they're going to teach the kids. They could be teaching them flat earth stuff, you know, it would be no better than teaching them creationism in my viewpoint. There are other organizations. RTRI has been around for a long time. Again, I said, I was raised Mormon, they do seminary. Go out to Utah, they're all doing seminary in the middle of the school day, but they're not trying to convert those who aren't Mormon during that time. I did seminary before school. I got up super early, drove to church before school when I was in high school because that's what my faith demanded. If this is important to you, you're going to make the time for your faith. And that's one of my biggest contentions with LifeWise is they say families don't have time for this, then what kind of believer are you? You know?
Good point.
What efforts, if any, are being made to educate the church leaders of other denominations so that they can inform their congregation to not sign up for this?
That's a great question. We flashed some of the letters that we had up there. We've actually got a whole folder of different letters, the clergy members, you know, rabbis, different denomination leaders that have spoken out. We actually have some of those letters. Again, I think it's just raising awareness. It's going to take people who are in those communities to do that, right? They don't want to hear from me, the atheists, they don't want to hear what I have to say, but if you are in that church, you know, you can talk to your church leaders. And I think that's really important. Even as an atheist, I think that the religious leaders are the strongest voice in this debate, right? Because they are going to be listened to more so than, you know, the atheist. I get called Satanist all the time by LifeWise supporters. It's not what it is. Again, I was raised Mormon. Like I can go circles around Bible talking doctrine with you if you really want to, but you know.
Yeah, and so I can add to that. As a person, as a former local pastor church, or local church pastor, and a person who's like, my role at Action in Molyne Valley is as the lead organizer to work with churches to affect social change, right? That's what we do. So I can say that the main way that this is getting out into the, among the church leaders is by those of us who are passionate about it, just flat out telling them in our social circles. So really, it's word of mouth. There isn't, I don't think, a conservative, like organized movement at this point of clergy who are out there saying to other clergy, don't do this. It is growing though. That's how I got involved in it, was a clergy person sent me a link to like, I think there is a Facebook group, Clergy Against LifeWise. And that's how I got involved in it, and there are a lot in there. So using the social networks that we have and then those, those leaders, none of us, I'll tell you this, there are very few of us that would stand up on a Sunday morning and say, and do an entire sermon against LifeWise. But we're doing sermons all the time about the gospel and how it's, it's for everyone and like that certain, certain beliefs don't necessarily align with that, right? So I, but I do think at me as a, as a religious leader, if I were to learn that one of my churches, that there were some people in the church that wanted to support this, I'd have conversations with them about the, why I didn't think it was a good idea, but I will also tell you as a pastor in the local church, our voice is not nearly as authoritative as the pastors in the SBC, right? So it is very interesting that the organization that put out this curriculum is also built on a foundation of unquestioning loyalty to the pastoral doctrine, whatever that is.
The male pastor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
When, when you said you went to state to talk to the legislators, but when you say we, are you talking about secular education association?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, a lot of people did. It wasn't just our organization, you know, we, the ACLU was down there, Honesty for Ohio Education was down there, the one she mentioned earlier, there was a bunch of people down there that, you know, testified against this too. The, you know, the legislators didn't care. It, it's not surprising to me, you know, they are in the pockets of these guys because when we flashed the slide up there earlier, but we didn't really go over it, they have these huge connections to these huge organizations, you know, that are involved in the Project 2025. This really is a political movement as much as it is anything else. Yeah, I mean, you know, First Liberty, the Heritage Foundation, if you're familiar with any of these names, they are these huge conservative think tanks and they are all supporting and propping up LifeWise. So these conservative leaders in the states are also on board with this.
Yeah, and, and just to kind of even, it's very difficult when, it's very difficult when the voices who are speaking out against this are demonized by, by groups like LifeWise or their, the theological backing that they hold, right? Because like a person like me, who I was, I was a United Methodist, and I mean, you have a United Methodist church right here, I knew the pastor. And if you know anything about that, there was a big split and a lot of demonization among the churches themselves, right? If you don't hold to that very specific doctrine, anything you have to say that critiques it is seen as evil, not just wrong, but flat out demonic. And so having a group like yours with a name like Secular Demon, you were, you were dead in the water in front of, in front of legislators who, a lot of their constituents believe that you are demonic, right? Because you, because of that. And so it's very, very, it's very, it was always going to be an uphill battle when the legislature was very much interested in pushing that forward.
Where is the Salem School District at with launching this program?
Well, we're on step 10. So that means they're launching and, and they're recruiting.
Step 10.
Step 10 means launch. So there's 10 steps at LifeWise. The first is to collect 50 signatures. And then they move on to step two, and like step five is board approval or step six, and that's where we were like last year when I first talked. And then in January, when the law changed to show, they were like advanced and then.
You mean, you mean LifeWise?
LifeWise.
Not, not the school.
Not the school.
Because Sean says no.
Yeah, he has said no every single time I have been in. He knows when he sees me, I'm going to talk probably about LifeWise. He's going to address it before we even start the meeting.
But, but LifeWise, you're talking about LifeWise is in step 10.
Yeah, that's launch. That means they're, they're coming to.
But that's no collaboration.
Well, they say there's no collaboration, but at some point the school has to collab, talk to them because they have to figure out what school you're coming to, what time and what kids you're taking. So somebody has to collaborate there.
But there has been no collaboration yet.
But there hasn't been any, but they are recruiting.
The school has to say they're not collaborating. I mean, the school, to cover their own butts, has to say, we're not partnering with them, we're not collaborating with them. Otherwise, that opens a whole door of other legal issues.
I think that's a, not a good choice of word because the statute says that board has to collaborate, right? What you mean is they don't have to necessarily agree.
Yeah. Well, and then we can see in their policy that they, they made that as difficult as possible for when they can release that. So, I mean, if by my math, that leaves lunch for LifeWise.
Yeah.
Which actually, that would, that would be good a t-shirt for them. Maybe I should contact Joel and get a cut. Lunch for LifeWise.
We talk about public funds. What we see when they take them out for lunches, they're sending the school lunches off with these kids too. And I'm, right, I'm not going to sit here and argue that our kids shouldn't all have free lunches, but again, that's taxpayer money being sent out the door to this religious organization to help prop its program up. LifeWise should be covering those lunches for the kids they're taking out, and that's not what we see. We see the cafeteria workers doing extra work to bag these lunches up, you know.
I do believe that, that the Salem Schools, the school board is doing everything in its power to put as many guardrails on their policy as possible. But to answer the original question, between LifeWise and the school board, it is launching. The, the question really is how easy is it going to be for them to launch because.
What does that mean, launching?
It means they're starting, they're going to have, they're going.
Who's vague?
LifeWise is going to have, they're going to be pulling children from Salem's, what grade?
They have, right, now they're going to start with the middle schools, seventh and eighth, and then later in the year, fifth and sixth from Southeast.
Yeah, they have announced that they will be having their LifeWise sessions this year for those grades.
You mean, they have the parents, they have the.
They've been, they were, listen, during the nature nurture thing, the Allen Freed thing, there was a LifeWise table in Salem. We, Brandy and I walked down, we got a flyer for the information and asked where will the kids go for this class? She has a daughter, so we pretended we wanted to know the information and they said, we are not disclosing that information to the public to protect the children. And we laughed, we laughed and I looked at her, I'm like, protect the children, they're not in the church right now. There's nobody there, it's an empty building. And once a red bus drops them off, we're going to know, then what's going to happen? Like they're all sudden not protected in this location? Like no, they don't want to build up public scrutiny and have opposition, that's why they don't tell us. So, you know, people talk in Salem and I heard that the Damascus French Church might be on board. Well, that's in proximity to Southeast schools, it's a two-minute drive, I did the Googling. Is that like legit? Well, I don't know. Somebody heard somebody at Libs talking and they said, we want to infiltrate Southeast schools. And they talked about a church that came up. Now, if that, I don't, that's not set in stone, that was just brought to me. And I don't know it, you know, I don't, I don't see any like.
Was your question, do they actually have students?
So, no, what I'm talking about is verbs, action. In other words, as I read the law and as I heard Sean, is that they have not had actual requests. So if you launch something, that means there's something happening with the school district and Sean has gotten the request. Has he actually gotten requests that he have to then start following the law like he said he will?
Well, I don't know if, there are people in the community that have gotten together to collect the signatures needed and move through the process of LifeWise. So the school's not like promoting it in that aspect or anything like that, but they have people working, trying, like people.
Sure, sure.
There are people, I believe, at the Bright Side Project that are getting, you know, promoting it. I know she used to be part of the steering committee, although she's told me she is no longer any part of the steering committee. I, it, I just, it's a little red flag that I, that I hold up. I don't think she's here tonight, she's told me she would come out and she could talk if she was here, but she didn't show up. But that's one place that I think is able, they look at community events, they look at events for kids and that's where they'll show up and then they'll, you know, they'll give you a little rubber chicken or whatever their little, little goodies are for the children. I mean, that's what I got. I picked up one of the little chickens.
But my point is, what you are, what you are presenting tonight is just very, very valuable, very, very important. It's very powerful. But be careful with the verbs that you use because you, you don't want to be caught in it. So, so nothing is really happening actively.
LifeWise is using the term of launch. That's their wording, so that's, that's why we're using that. Yes, the school board has, they won't say launch, they'll never say it even when it's happening because that's not their program. I, 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 I hear what you're saying.
You see my point.
I do see your point. We're just using the language that is being used. I think to answer your question totally honestly, I don't think we'll actually ever know who has requested and who hasn't. And I don't really think that the superintendent is at liberty to say more than, even, even more than.
He has to take action.
True, but I don't think he has to admit, especially if he's trying to limit their ability to do it, that there are, there are parents who have asked for this or who have asked that their students be involved in it. I can guarantee you, I would be willing to bet my next year's worth of paychecks that there are parents who have signed their kids up for that for this year.
Yep.
How are we going to find that out?
Do a records request. That's what I was going to say. The only way you're going to have the answer to your question is if you do a records request through the school.
By the way, I'm unemployed, like I don't get paid, so don't take that. Call me for my paychecks.
I have a question for Zach and perhaps Rachel, personal experience, but I think on the website that there was a, a thing about if something goes wrong, is an accident or it's a child that's abused, it appeared to me that the major organization, the national organization had these strict forms where basically they have to gather all the information even before they went to the police. And then they also had to have the parents fill out this three-page questionnaire that was more like an inquisition, if not even blaming them. Could you speak to that? And maybe Rachel could say whether or not that is kind of what they would, as a teacher she was taught, that's their procedure.
Yeah, it's another, it's another huge issue I have that they claim that they're mandated reporters, but if you actually look into their policies, what their policies and procedures are, is that if something happens, you are mandated to report it to your superior. Anybody who has worked in a school or has been a mandated reporter knows that's not what it is. A mandated reporter has to tell the cops or CPS. So again, LifeWise claims to be mandated reporters, but it's not. They just have to tell their superior in the organization. And then the other part of that is, yeah, they will try to mitigate this by going to the school and saying, do you have any information on this? And they, they just try to gather everything before they go to the police, if they go to the police. Again, you know, this is something we've seen time and time again, especially when it comes to sexual abuse, the Southern Baptist Convention specifically, he doesn't want to talk bad about them, I absolutely will.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here.
Sure. But, you know, they, they have had these huge scandals of covering of sexual abuse and it's just something we see time and time again, and it's only a matter of time before we see this happen, unfortunately.
And how long are they allowed to be away from school? Is it an hour class, two-hour class?
Maybe it's an hour a week.
An hour a week? All this work for one hour a week?
Forty-five minutes in some cases. I mean, it depends on how long your period schedules are. And again, this is something else that we see, if they're doing this during lunch, they are literally eating their lunch on the bus, like.
And the one hour includes the transportation time there and back.
Now, so, yeah, and so that, so there, to that point though, let's take an example, a real life example of how this could live out. My white teacher student teaching in Louisville, and in Louisville, their elementary ed class, their elementary music classes met for 30 minutes, three times a week. So if you take an hour, if you take one of those and those kids are now pulled or they can't do instruction, now you've taken 33% of their weekly time. So to, yeah, the hour by itself not, maybe doesn't feel like that much, but again, when you're compiling that on to these classes that are already at risk of not having their full educational allotment, and you put that on top of the fact that some districts already limit the amount of exposure they get to those classes, it can build up, it can build up.
And that varies a lot by the school as well and their setup. So in a school district that I'm familiar with, my husband's the school resource officer, they have about an hour because they do lunch and recess combined. In the school that I taught in, I had about, once we transitioned from the building, and, and that was during the special time, so they missed whatever special they were supposed to go to that day. So once we transitioned from the building into our classroom, got sat down and everything, I had about 22 minutes. And when I went to LifeWise Summit, not this year, but the previous year, and talked with other teachers at the table, some teachers had as little as 15 minutes. So, I mean, the whole time is transition time if they're doing a seven-minute drive or a five-minute drive. So they really have not a whole lot of time.
Everything varies.
The hour is the law, I think. The law says they can have an hour.
Yeah, right.
Judy.
It may seem like an insignificant amount of time now relative to the rest of the school week, but I'll bet quite a lot that once they've infiltrated a school, that time will grow and grow. It won't just be one hour a week.
Yeah, I was enjoying saying that the hour is no big deal.
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't feel that way. I just, you lob, you lobbed a softball over the plate and I was like, hey, this is a great way to express it. I agree 100% with that. And we know that that's true because they just went from making it optional to mandating to the law, right? It wasn't enough for them to just have the option, they had to make it mandatory. And so now that it's mandatory, what's the next mandatory thing?
Indiana actually did just that. They changed law in Indiana to make it longer than what it was.
I have two questions, I see. Tony?
Oh, boy. This better be good.
Is it good, Tony? Come on.
It's my kid.
I mean, I don't really know, but the question I've had is what is LifeWise?
Well, LifeWise is, is, is Bible class during the school day and they, they will take kids out of school at certain times to pull them out and the, and, and everything I've just said, they all explain it in a lot of more stuff, so that's pretty much what it is.
Would you want to leave school?
No.
No, he wouldn't, no.
It's okay, your dad can talk to you later about that.
That's exactly how that's.
I mean, you're here to leave with a panelist, you're so lucky.
Kitchen table conversation, Mary.
On her drive home, Jan.
Yeah, I, I just want to put this in a bigger context that it really is part of the process that our elected politicians are trying to do to destroy one of the sacred tenets of our constitution and that, and that is destroy separation of church and state. This is like a Project 2025.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Only coming, only coming from, only coming from a religious organization, and I'm embarrassed to say I'm from Halyard, Ohio.
Yeah. Well, you, well, hold on one second. You actually bring up a really good point, and that is Joel himself, didn't he just receive an award by the Heritage Foundation, the Project 2025 people?
They, they, I don't know if it was him himself, but they got a grant. The organization got a grant from them.
And they definitely wouldn't be giving out money to somebody who wasn't trying to meet that particular criteria, 100%.
This is all Seven Mount Mandate stuff, I'm not going to get into that. I'm, I'm sure you're probably familiar with it, you know, the system minionism with this particular brand of Christianity, they believe that they are superior to everybody else because of their beliefs and it is their God-given right to rule over business, over education, over government. And this is not something new, it's something they have been doing for a long time.
Yeah, and there's an interview with one of their leaders that literally says, we, we have owned this.
Caesar.
Yeah, we have owned this and it is our, it is our mandate to, to own it all and to control it, to dominate it. And when you hear leaders from a quote unquote non-denominational organization talk in those terms, you know for sure that they are full of it.
Yes, I'm directly aware, our parents of what is happening and whether or not this is their children regardless of what denomination or what church they go to or whatever, religious or not, that this is a Southern Baptist.
They, LifeWise does all they can to erase that reality and they're hoping that nobody looks at it.
They agree. Put it out there.
They don't, but they, yeah, they should.
They did, they sued me.
Yes, she did. She was doing it.
Yeah, that's why we're doing this, but, yeah, they don't want that, they don't want that out there.
Well, then we have to do it.
Absolutely, ma'am. I agree with you, so let's let's march.
Yes. That's why you're here. I wanted to inform you, so don't be squeaky wheels.
And that's why I'm telling, that's why I'm saying, everybody has to start going to our school board meetings. Everybody.
Yes. Yes, I say.
How many parents are here right now? How many, how many of you actually have children in this school system?
In a school system.
Two of us, two of us. The rest of us are grandparents. Great. So I'll tell you, my experience of going to school board meetings, the people I go with are in this room and that's George. She's running for Salem City Council. And um and Brandy, she's my friend. She's the one that made me aware of Lifewise last year and I dove in and jumped into it. She goes. Listen, I had four hundred and seven comments on Salem Local Chat when I said, what do you think about Bible schools, uh classes coming and taking kids out of. Uh out of the school in Salem? And it was just a question. And I had over four hundred and seven comments. And I was like, wow, you Salem chat, we're chatting. The admin said after the school board meeting and it came out that he didn't wanna go forward with it. They said, well, the school's not going forward with this anyway, so we're taking this down because it's political. And I and and plus, one of the admin for the Salem chat page was on the steering committee of Lifewise. So. A lot of times when I put things out, it gets shut down or hidden. They don't delete it necessarily anymore because I get, I know when they delete it. And I I get it, I see it, you know? But what they hide it, then they can't, I don't know they hide it. But I found out that the last time I put something out, they hid it. Somebody said, do you have the pictures that you just shared? And I said, yeah, I have those screenshots. They said, I can't find it now. I go, oh, is it like hidden? And he said, I believe it is. The next thing I know, on my page, cause I had it on my page and I shared it to the other page, the woman that was on the steering committee. Told me, she came over on my page where I said, it looks like I was hidden or no, no comments have been turned off for this post. That's what I said. And she said, I I wish you would stop acting like I'm still part of this. I did not delete your comment. And somebody else said, this post wasn't about the comment being deleted. It said the comments were turned off. And I go again, and I told her, I said, you know, she told me she'd be here tonight. I said, I'd love to meet you, be great for you to come out, you know, get an idea of what, you know, what I. What you're gonna hear. Um and I said, it'd be nice to meet you. And I didn't get to meet her in person. She's not here. Anyway, so there's been weird stuff with that since the beginning. When I first asked them about it, her what, his, her husband created a meme for me. Said Heather Smith always triggered and had a girl with short hair, liberal glasses, like this face and then that was a meme and um. And my attorney said, do you want me to have him removed? And I said, no, he's a life coach and boardman. I wanna show people what kind of work he does, so I'm gonna put it out there, you know? But those are the kind of people that are promoting Lifewise. Another person came on my wall and said, um some other stuff and we went on his stuff and it was. Straight pride month, uh white pride month, you know, different, things like that. Like, why do we need that in our schools? Were we trying to, you know? What is that? I just don't even understand how that's loving or anything, so. And we are, we have like five minutes. I need to respect the historical society's time. Um but you have another question, yes.
It's my understanding that some some schools have kind of gotten around this by saying, students can't be released for any class that requires a grade. So then that pretty much leaves lunch and recess.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's the biggest thing they can do.
How are those schools that you you gave some examples of allowing students to to come out of science, social studies? How how has that happened?
Because they don't care. There's no oversight. There is no oversight. The person who should be doing something about this is the Attorney General.
Is there no way?
And Ghost is one hundred percent on board with this program. Their history of oversight.
Yeah, when they originally met in Salem in twenty twenty-three, Custid and Joel Pittin were at the Bright Side uh Project meeting with them in Salem. Um and at that point, barely, you could ask people, they didn't know about Lifewise. Still, people might not know about it. And that's how they get in. Because you don't know about them. And then when you question them, that people are like, well, what do you have against Christians? And I have nothing against Christians. I'm not. You know, a devil worshiper or something like that, you know? Um you have hearts on me, tattooed everywhere. I don't know what else that says, but I mean.
Satan did come disguised as an angel of light.
No, I might be, sorry. Anyway, um if you have questions or comments that you didn't get to ask us, we do have note cards over there. You're welcome to put your question or comment.